Welcome everybody, this is the amenities committee meeting on Wednesday the 5th of April. Thank you very much for coming. The first item on the agenda 766, does anybody have any declarations of any disposable pecuniary interests please? Dave?
Yeah, there's a small grant application on the 77122 for Norwich Road Business Association and I'm not on the committee at that. I'll be available to answer questions if you've got any, but yeah, I won't vote on it.
That's fine, presumably David it's a non-pecuniary interest but just for transparency, yeah.
So I'm not on the committee but I think I...
That's fine, appreciate you both noting those, it's always best to err on the side of caution, so thank you very much. Any others please? Okay, thank you very much, 767, do we have any apologies for absence? Karen?
Apologies received from councillors Burrito, Brain, Parker and Wright.
Lovely, thank you very much. 768, these are the minutes from our meeting held on the 15th of February and they were received by full council on the 28th of February. Are the committee happy that I sign them as a true and accurate record? Yeah, thank you very much, agreed. 769, committee officers report, this was circulated in advance, so hopefully you've all had a good opportunity to read it. As you will have noticed, Nick is off work at the moment, so Graham's very kindly agreed to come along, thank you very much Graham. There's quite a bit in here, so what I'd quite like to do is if, obviously it's not Graham's report, it's Nick's report, but if Graham takes us through each section, I suspect some of this work actually Graham was done by you. Even though it's in Nick's report, you know, I know you do quite a lot of the stuff on the ground. So yeah, if you take us through it and then if anyone's got any questions after each section, we'll take them as we go through rather than at the end. So over to Barbara.
The team over the months of February and March have been carrying out a range of tasks including various amounts of maintenance and cleaning of street furniture as well as reporting faulty items under Breckland and Northford County Council. Other works have included minor grit into removals, the clearing of vacant allotments, installation of dog beds, street planters and flower beds, as well as requesting winter strip salt bins to various locations. Correspondence with other councils, further requests and correspondence have now been sent to both Breckland and Northford County Council to request winter grit bins at the following locations to be approved and added to the planning schedules. Random road into Cans Close, halfway joining Blade and Bridge and Vicarage Road. We've also notified Breckland Council that their new double litter bins are not permanently fixed at various locations. These would be the ones on the river pathway. The new litter bin request has been received for the Albert Shop area at Pine Close to replace the open top bin which is no longer effective. Requests to Northford County Council have been made to seek new traffic control by last at the entrance to King Street. Requests have been made for three winter grit bins from previous amenities meeting, but no further correspondence has been received at present from Northford County Council on approvals.
Okay, everybody happy with that?
Quick question about the bollards, are you talking about the bollards out here? I noticed one is missing, presumably is that why we're talking to Northford County Council?
That's been broken, the one next bit, the lock's been missing for some reason.
Yeah, that's what I was going to bring up. And we, once again, I think I've been asked a number of times to secure it because quite often when I leave council meetings, it's leaning against the wall out there, it's very dangerous I think because that could fall through.
Every day I'll put it back when I walk past and it gets removed again.
So if we can emphatically ask Northford County Council to secure that, that'd be great, thanks very much.
Been chasing them, I'm not sure where we've got them for that.
Okay, thanks for that.
Okay, thank you Dave, Graham.
Street furniture.
Just ask about the grit bins, are they, will that be next year now that they'll be ready to be used or?
I would imagine so.
Right, oh because I misinformed the Vicarage Road group, I thought they had already been done but...
Not sure where we are exactly with that. It's been dealing with, but if they're not in now, I would imagine probably be installed for next year.
Okay, thank you.
The team, sorry, street furniture, the team have recently been cleaning and washing the street furniture as part of their regular schedule. This has taken place around town including benches, bins, signage and pavement areas, also memorial benches at the cemetery. New dog waste bin requested at the last amenities meeting has been installed and barn cross covered by park. Would the memorial benches have now, it says all here, but in fact it's about 60, 70% been refurbished at the cemetery. We're working through it on a daily basis, which involves pressure washing, cleaning and re-preserving to treatment on them. If you walk through the cemetery, that's how it's all done, we're slowly working back down this way. Followed by all signage, signage on the town's common areas will soon be replaced and the new signs are currently on order and being manufactured. The new signs will also include information on outdoor antisocial behaviour at each site if detected, as well as emergency contact numbers for graziers in council.
Can I ask one more, Graham, when I spoke with Nick last week, I asked if the design of the signs could be shared with the committee. We did that on cemetery with some signage, I thought it was a really useful process just for us to have an oversight of it. And it may be too late, they may actually have already made them up or whatever, but if we could have some input on the text and, you know, bits that are on there, that'd be really useful.
Yeah, if it's not too late, I wasn't too late on to Nick. He said King Manor.
Yeah, we might have missed the boat, but if they haven't actually done them yet, if we could circulate the design, that'd be really useful.
I just have an officer ahead of us.
The team have recently been working hard, puts out on refreshing the town's flower beds and planters to have a splash spring colour in public areas. Unfortunately, within two days of these being planted, the King Square area was targeted and the plants were vandalised and prammed around the area. The town team, despite being disheartened, stepped in and replanted these up to continue the area as splash colour. Again, following the planters being refurbished, these were once again destroyed for a second time. Northford Police have also confirmed that the report is being investigated and they will take further action where necessary to stop this antisocial behaviour from happening. I did actually receive a phone call from Northford Police on this matter this morning, just asking a few more questions about CCTV etc.
It says on here, they will take further action where necessary to stop this antisocial behaviour from happening, which seems a bold claim to me. Do we know what they're proposing, you know, what action they're thinking about there? Because the reason I ask, there is a major issue with antisocial behaviour in the town centre at the moment. A couple of times I've been sort of down mainly to visit takeaways, it's been horrendous, you know, it's been really difficult. And it's not just our, you know, I'm obviously disappointed about our plants and all the hard work being, well, partly destroyed. I'm sure not all of them were recoverable, but also just from a sort of public safety point of view, I've had people very intimidated to go into the town centre. And I'm really glad that we, you know, you guys have proactively reported this, but...
We're constantly talking graffiti, constantly talking damage, even the minor stuff because we've got a chain of reports going through all the time. Because it's the only way of getting the attention for it.
Yeah, I agree.
Kings Gardens itself has been, result of much damage, the netball club are putting their hair out because of the problems that are happening. Yeah, since New Year pretty much, it's been a long term thing.
No, and I'm glad you're reporting that. Dennis, did you want to add something?
Just, just to re-emphasise, this is something we need to nip in the bud as quick as possible now because once that casino place opens up, I think we're going to get even more damage in everything for it.
No, I think it's probably a younger age group is having problems. Now, I mean, you do get a little bit coming out of ice at night time. One of the planters in town, a friend of mine said, you know, I had to stand that up the other night because two lads coming out of ice and knocked it over. He said to me, well, how did you knock it over? And I said, I was laying on top of it. And this is kind of thing you have to deal with from there. But the plants and the graffiti, it's a younger age group, it's school age children.
Yeah, definitely. And I know, I think I saw somewhere online about stag meeting in April. I think, Dennis, Barbara, you two are town council reps on stag?
20th springs to mind, I'll certainly bring it up.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that's what I was going to suggest, it may be that other people attend and raise it, but I think it is important that we as a town council raise it officially if you like because, you know, our own street furniture is being damaged, but also it is a town issue as much as anything else. Okay, Mike?
Just wanted to add that those planters and so on have not been vandalised. Several people have pointed out to me, do look very good, you know, the great pity of it is they're really looking good. The team have done a great job and it's deeply frustrating that we're not getting support at the moment, perhaps from other authorities that might be able to prevent it happening. And even a minor matter relatively speaking, like not having a bollard in place, it just makes it easier for people who want to be awkward in the wrong place. So good luck and thanks for what you have done, that's right, if not, then it's frustrating.
Yeah, you can get some nice feedback from the public as well, especially under quite that hill helps.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, grazing and water supplies, we've now received an approval of a cent from Natural England for the installation of a permanent water supply to both sides of Barn Common, which will automatically feed drinking troughs for livestock once installed on site. The team are working together with the new graziers to get the stock holding pens and equipment ready for grazing season to begin at each site. Contractors are now quoting for the works needed for stock holding pens which have been requested by graziers to help at each site. Inquiries have also been made to Historic England in seeking approval for a potential of a permanent water supply for the Castle Park and Ramparts.
When do the animals get released onto our places?
We're just putting together the holding pens and then they're like, another week to finish the work from Castle Park. It should be fairly soon. The agreements have been signed because they, sorry, have been prepared and they just have to be signed.
Yeah, okay, so we have no fixed date yet for it.
Not yet, and Nick might have a fixed date, unfortunately he's...
And these grazing pens, what does that entail?
I think that's a holding area so when they take off vehicle, they can put them in.
I figured that cost us to us as a holding pens, it is?
So if I can add a comment, we agreed to set aside a sum of money for the graziers, which is £3,000. That has been funded from their £3,000.
And that's £3,000, yeah, okay, thank you.
Let me just check on Castle Park grazing, do we need and have we sought consent from English Heritage for the types of animals that we want to put on there? Okay, the only reason I ask is having met with the contractors on site on Monday, the ones that have just been doing this rubber appearance, they did comment that they were surprised that large animals like cows are okay for an historic site because obviously they're more inclined to churn up the ground in historic location. Sheep and goats will just eat the vegetation, whereas, you know, cows might sort of rut against it and stuff. So I just want to make sure before we sign those agreements that we do check with Historic England.
Check with ours.
My limited knowledge on things, one of the things we want livestock on there for is to rough up the land because certain plants will only come through once the land has been disturbed. So that may be why the cattle are there because they do rough up the land, wouldn't you say?
It may be.
It allows the new, those rare plants to grow, doesn't it?
Yeah, I would rather we just double check with Historic England rather than potentially upset them.
It was double checking, but I think the breed of cow is a fairly small heritage type of cow rather than the one of the...
Yeah, great big, beefy ones, yeah.
But yeah.
Yep, first?
It's a Red Poll.
Is that a red poll?
It's smaller.
Yeah, smaller.
Dexter cattle that was on the comments, smaller or hardy?
Might be Dexter, yeah.
There's another one, a belted galloway, which is also quite small. And don't, I mean, it's quite right there to rough up the area because you've got to have some scrub. You don't want the brambles or...
That's right.
Yeah.
It does like check it out because we need to...
It was merely a conversation on Monday with a contractor who, you know, works in various locations, so. Okay, thank you Graham.
All right, when the new council starts, thanks for letting one dot castle and have a look.
Yep.
Castle Park, after much communication attempts and missions for works to be started, we've governing bodies, some is broken grass clearance on site has taken place. The contractor also carried out a nesting survey and laid the eggs for the appropriate bodies on the site before works were able to commence. Unfortunately, a lot of the vegetation was beyond livestock's tackling, this was, this as discussed with the new graziers and hence the need of a mechanical cut to get the area back to grazing over for livestock as intended originally. The site has been managed as funding is a key aspect for this historical site and a key aspect of the maintenance agreement of this area is to return this back to a site where the chalk floor reconprised. Contractor works under strict health and safety code conduct and all staff professionally trained and risk assessments are carried out as well as signage warning and public machinery and warning public that machinery and operatives are in the area. They regularly assess the works they are completing with all necessary checks to the area prior to works commencing and cutting. Advice was also sought from external bodies by the contractor to ensure the site and works were following the bird survey and protocol as well as the procedure needed for a historical site. English Heritage approved all works to proceed to the area and the committee unfortunately. And the committee, unfortunately, the delay in communication from the governing bodies meant that the works proceeded later than originally planned. This work is now ensuring that the site can be sensitively managed and grazed going forward under the scheduled ancient monuments protocol as intended with previous officers. As vegetation on the site and tree roots are currently damaging the site and the concern is for this to stop from managing the vegetation previously then.
There's a couple of things I wanted to add to that because as I say, on Monday I did get the opportunity to meet with the contractors following the discussion of full council. I mean, the first thing is just to say, they were quite honest that it was not desirable at all to be doing that sort of work in March. It's not completely forbidden as long as you take necessary precautions. And they did talk me through the precautions that they took. And one of the things I wasn't aware of is our own conservation group volunteers actually went out in advance of the work taking place and identified bird nesting sites and recorded it, so that information was quite useful. And on Monday, they walked me around and showed me locations where they hadn't cut because there were bird nests visible. So I was quite reassured by that. For those of you that are familiar with the technology called what three words, where you can have an exact location, they are going to be looking at a more detailed what three words mapping exercise of the whole site for bird nesting sites, which is really useful. They have stopped the work on site now for the season, which I think is good. But as Graham touched upon there, there is a whole load of other bits that need to be done in the future to get the site to the condition that we want it in. Particularly if you look at the hill itself, there's a number, well, there's, I don't know, it must be at least 100 self-seeded trees growing that need to be tackled at some point. I spoke to the contractor about the need for a five-year plan to manage Castle Park, the hill and the grounds and I think this committee post-election, that really should be one of the committee's priorities is establishing a five-year plan. One of the reasons I think there's been a lot of concern about the work done is because the council historically for at least five years hasn't done anything. This should be a rolling programme of a bit of work every year rather than everything all at once, which is what's happened. So a more sort of sympathetic five-year plan over that time. And also from a funding point of view, you know, it's expensive to do it all in one go, whereas we actually have a plan. I think that'd be really useful, but we are where we are for now, but post-May, whoever's left out of all of us. You know, we have a real opportunity, I think, to make Castle Park a fantastic, well, it is a fantastic site from an environmental point of view, but there's, there's work that we have to do as a council to maintain it and improve it and there's a good opportunity there to do something. Is everyone happy with that?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, yeah, the new council really needs to take that on board. I mean, that is, that is a historic site, but it's such a good thing for the community and for us not to have a plan of action for over a period of time is dereliction of our duty in a way, so, yeah.
In terms of actions Karen, for the minutes, one of the things the contractor said was his advice would be to put some grass seed down on the areas that had been particularly stripped back to encourage grass to grow rather than brambles essentially. So if we can make a note for that to be done, that would be good. Okay, everyone happy with that? Cool, we'll move on to play parks then Graham.
Play parks, the play park repairs are progressing well. We are now nearing the completion of the second phase with the play parks contractor. Following works have now been all completed to each site. Richard Easton, new surfaces, two new gates. Red Castle, new swing seats and chains, new rocker, new spinner, new climb ward. Main Street, new climbing road, although that hasn't actually been installed yet because they're missing a part and it's due to be installed very soon. Edinburgh Way, replacement of rockers and surfacing repairs. Pine Close, surface to swings, roundabout and climbing frame, new surfacing and turf and replacement of two rockers. The town team recently completed the turfing and soil level build up to the Pine Close area. This has made a significant difference to the edges of the new surfacing and was installed around each piece of equipment and is now finished to groundworks. Gate Park as well in this one, if you include that too. Yes, Gate Park, the park installers after much correspondence and constant pounding are attending the site to carry out overdue concrete repairs. They have been done, so I was down there today. All the lighting is now repaired and operational as it has been signed off. Unfortunately, this gate park has received ongoing issues of antisocial behaviour which has been reported to the police and we continue to monitor this on a daily basis. The site has seen a small section of the boundary hedge being vandalised and removed next to the adjoining field as well as the soil dug up from the surrounding surface and holes being created and materials thrown across the site including glass bowls. Quotations are currently being sought to see how much a permanent barrier fence would cost to help protect the neighbouring farmer's field from site further issues. Again, if you notice in this photograph here, we've got a repaired fence that was done recently. I was down there today and that's now in the farmer's field. It's just an ongoing battle down there.
Okay, Dennis, you want to hand it first?
Yeah, we've always had a bit of problems because of the location of the thing. Just a question, is that coming into our boundaries or is that still going to be in Crockston?
I think it's already in our boundaries.
Yeah, I think, I think it is because...
Because it was originally in Crockston, when we, when we built it, we were actually building on Crockston land and we asked the permission of the parish council from Crockston to do so. But I'm just wondering if it is being, from the 1st of April, did it come in within our boundaries?
Boundaries change all the time.
Oh, right, okay.
So it was in Crockston, but very surely it won't be.
Well, from the 1st of April, were you supposed to take it on?
Well, already.
Then it's our plan now, thank you.
I mean, regardless of if it's in Crockston or historically, it's something that we paid for and we own, so we are responsible. I'm just thinking, I know there was a fairly detailed management plan for this gate park put together when we applied for planning commission. And again, it might be something worth revisiting post-May just to make sure that that's current because there was always the concern about antisocial behaviour because it is a fairly isolated location. So it would be worth, again, committee looking at that and just seeing if we're doing everything we can. And particularly if we're going to get some quotes back for a permanent fence because that would come out of our play area budget to fund that, so a good time to revisit.
I just wondered with your Northford County Council hat, I'm sorry, you're probably going to laugh when I ask this. Is there any budget for youth work in Northford these days?
Not really.
I think when the youth centre was closed, they were talking about money being set aside for peripatetic youth work. And I know it's really good if there was some sort of people that could go up to that site and engage with the...
What they do is they fund, in our case, Mancroft Advice Project, which are based at Charles Borough Centre and they're literally there today. So there are youth workers employed by them to work with young people, but I'm not sure of what they call detached youth work, where they go around the streets. So again, as part of the management plan, it might be worth seeing what other agencies might be able to support. I have been personally contacted as chair of the committee by, they're not quite young people, I think they're in their twenties, but they skateboard. And they've been very upset about the state of the site, they want it to be, you know, they've lobbied me to make sure the lights were fixed and that sort of thing. So it clearly is used, it's a good facility, but, you know, we just need to clamp down on some of the antisocial issues and stuff.
It's unfortunate that we ended up having to put it there because the original site would have been much easier to control, but...
I'm just, when you're saying that there's a sort of group concerned people in their twenties, I mean, maybe we could encourage them to sort of create a user group or something. There is sort of like a group of people who are concerned and can do some creative stuff there.
Yeah, no, that's a good idea actually.
Yeah, Mike? I'm not sure that we can simply say it's all because of the location, which is on the edge of town. A few minutes ago, we were talking about similar vandalism in the middle of town.
Yes.
I think that's a bit simplistic to be perfectly honest. I think we need to look at the wider issues and as a community, put our awe in, put our comments in to say, we do need more police officers, we do need more activities for young people in a positive sense. I'm convinced that one of the worst mistakes we've made over the last few decades is to run down the opportunities for young people to have worthwhile activities, particularly in school holidays, which we're in now. We're relying, as it were, on the goodwill of a few volunteers in churches and other organisations to provide activities which probably deals particularly well with their own sympathisers and adherents. They not impinge much on the general young population. We do not in this country treat young people, especially teenagers and early teenagers, at all well. We don't give them activities, we don't see them as a positive contribution to society. And the ones we're talking about now, we're simply saying, well, you know, young people are a pain and in fact, of course, some of them are. We could do much more and I'm just, what worries me and concerns me is we the town council recognise the problem, but we the town council don't have the powers to deal with the problem. And that is very frustrating, if anyone's got your bright ideas, I'd love to hear them.
I'd just add that I think Mike makes a good point and I'm sitting here thinking all these skateboarders, why are they messing it all up? It could well be people who haven't got skateboards doing that and, you know, just... I think the dedicated skaters are as frustrated as we are.
Yes, yeah. Okay, thank you very much for that, move on Graham, next one.
Other projects the team have been working on, allotment clearances, Barn Common has repaired. Team have recently cleared a number of allotment plots to help reduce the waiting list to get these allocated ready for the grazer season ahead of tenants. Barn Common and Castle Park fence repairs, the team are currently working on, working with the new graziers to prepare the sites for grazing by carrying out repairs to fence lines and replacing posts, gate latches as well as tightening closure springs ahead of the season. Most of the gates, in fact all the gates from Castle Park are missing there, locking bars have all been stolen.
Are you admitting to stealing them?
No, thank you very much. I'm not strange to do that. No, I'm just wondering, did the committee have a chance to meet the graziers at any time?
There was a subcommittee that interviewed them and made a recommendation back to the full committee.
I was out at that time.
I think you were on the subcommittee, but then obviously didn't make it, so.
Parks has so much trouble, honestly. But yeah, so we did, because I, well, I might bump into the grazier one day.
Yeah, it was Chris and Dave, they showed them all.
Very interesting.
Yeah, a bit of work.
Okay, Fish Bar's next.
Fish Bar, yes, works have now started on the construction of Fish Bar. Council's contractors have started works for the area, construction is now underway. Notices have been placed in the area, sorry, notices have been placed in the area to warn the public that the footpath will be temporarily closed while works proceed and an alternative footpath route is in place during this time. The town team continue to monitor the area daily, liaising with the contractor.
Please, Mike?
Just, I mean, I walk past it a lot and wonder what is going on, to be perfectly honest. A very wide gravel path appears to be created, being created... A very wide gravel path appears to be created, being created, presumably wide enough for vehicles to use, is that the idea?
Their machinery was sinking in there because it's between the two, it's like sponge.
Is that something they'll be going to have to pay extra for?
I don't believe so, no. I think it's something they've had to do to be able to get their plant in and out because of the conditions of the ground.
Presumably it will then be left there when the job is done.
I would imagine.
Thank you. Does that cause us difficulty because that area is of scientific interest and if we put a wide gravel path in. Are we not looking after our land properly? I know we had to do it to get the Fish Pass done, but.
Hmm.
The people that are doing it do work closely with the environment, so I'm sure it'll be communicated.
That's good.
Yeah, I've met the contractors that are doing the Fish Pass and was thoroughly impressed with them.
Yeah, it's nice to do it.
No, clearly. I just need to deliver some more latest.
Yeah.
Um, but, uh, what I think would be beneficial is for the, them to meet with the committee. Uh, uh, because I asked him a few questions about the Fish Pass and he was able to answer them. Um, and I would like to better understand from an environmental point of view how it works. Um, because he was talking about adding some bits to it to help sort of, um, uh, create fish, fish breeding grounds essentially. So that sounded, you know, and they would do that at their own cost. Um, so I think, again, that would be something good for the committee to just, you know, improve our own knowledge of what we're putting in there. Um, because it's, you know, despite all the controversy we've had on it, it is a, you know, very positive thing that's happening. Um, good for the environment, it solves the flooding, you know, potential flooding issue or hopefully solves something, I'm being real optimistic. Hopefully solves a flooding issue. Um, so, you know, let's, let's make sure we're all aware of it.
If they put gravel into the bed of the river, that will give us, as you say, breeding grounds and stuff.
Yeah, it's more like brushes essentially, you know, for the fish to sort of lay their eggs and that sort of thing. They have to latch on to something. That's my limited knowledge of fish breeding for you. That's, that's how I understand it.
That's probably right, yeah.
Spawning is the word.
Spawning.
Spawning, yes, very good.
Maybe fishies. Thank you. Sorry, we digress. Graham?
Conservation volunteers, the volunteers have been busy working alongside David, our town team member, in carrying out vegetation management to farm common. This has included the removal of a significant amount of course through January and February. This vegetation management opens up the ground to allow more natural wild plants to develop in new spaces as advised with the management process for the area. The other areas that the group recently worked on and maintained is the creeping marsh water site. The volunteers, along with advice from Plantlife, created scribes to encourage the growth of this rare plant to survive. This very rare plant is now showing significant signs of great success within the area.
Scribes.
Volunteers recently attended two weeks of workshops where they picked up new skills to use within our open spaces, skills also to promote them. This ranged from the art of nature crafting and using items that they collected from sites. They also did a frog and toad survey course where they were able to learn how to carry, how to survey the frog and toad spawn and record the information and findings. So this information can be used and calibrated for research purposes. Total number of volunteer hours over the last two months has equated to February seventy-five and a half hours, March forty-five hours.
Thank you very much.
Let's come up on the creeping marsh water, please. Uh, I'm really pleased to hear that you say there's evidence to be growing this year. There is, we've had a sign up, haven't we, which effectively encourages people to walk over the area on the grounds that that's clearing the area or helping create the right conditions. Is that still true, do you think, or now that the plants have appeared, do we need to stop people, discourage people walking on top of them? I mean, it sounds trivial, I know, but there is a sign that specifically says, effectively, please do it.
Yeah, that's something I have to check, to be fair. Um, I'll look into that though.
Okay, any further questions, folks, on the town team report? No, I think it goes without saying, Graham, uh, for you and the rest of the team, very grateful for all of the work that goes on in between the meetings. I mean, this is the sort of highlight of our meeting really here and what's, what's going on. I don't know if that says a lot about the rest of the meeting, but, um, we're very grateful for the work that you do. And, uh, it's always, you know, good to see and I like the photos and I like to see what's happening, so appreciate all of that. Yeah. From a personal point of view, um, uh, Tom, yourself and the other chap who I don't know for planting the daffodil bulbs on Kim's belt last year. Which, um, I know, I think three of you, uh, did that and they looked tremendous. Very pleased about.
Making statements.
Yep. Right, let's move on then to seven, seven, zero, financial report update. Alan?
Um, we've quite a bit of time and effort trying to get all the information in. Uh, I think we've been relatively successful. Uh, this is a preliminary report, we still have to do all the year end entries, it does have an impact. But we have made an effort to, to, to try and make sure that the information is as complete as possible. Most disappointing side is from the income side, is that we haven't received the grants that we received, uh, that we thought we would receive. Uh, I had an envelope for rural payments the other day and I was quite excited, but only to discover that we'd actually been overpaid some of our grants and we have to pay it back. So there's about eight thousand pounds worth of money that we have to give back. So I'm going to ask our agents who we use to put in these grants to investigate why the grants are lower than last previous years. So that I can come back and at least inform the committee and make sure that going forward, we budgeted on a more realistic basis. What we've been doing is we've just been carrying forward budgets from one year to the next and we've been receiving the money in. But for this year, you know, we, we've only received twelve thousand pounds, which is relatively low compared to, to previous years. And that's had a big impact on, on our income, if you have, you know, looking at the statistics, I'd be. In terms of expenditure, um, I've taken out the playparks expenditure that, that's funded from reserves. So that's now been out, so I've posted those entries. Uh, so our playparks previously, we had quite a significant amount of money, all that, all those, uh, playpark repairs that we funded from reserves, that is out. Uh, we still, I've provided for the work done on Castle Mount. Uh, the invoice came in late yesterday afternoon, so I budgeted six thousand for that or provided six thousand for that. And then the amount of the invoice is about five thousand two hundred. And the only other cost that I know that we're getting, and I've got a feeling that it's sitting on my next computer, it hasn't been, just been a three, is tree works. There's the final bit of tree work invoice that, that, that we were hoping, or we were told that it's going to come in before the end of the month and we're just waiting for that. But otherwise, from an expenditure perspective, we budgeted, we budgeted to spend hundred and sixty-six thousand and we spent a hundred and sixty-three thousand. So overall, even though our expenditure is a lot lower, uh, but because of our income, our net result is we're down just nearly thirty thousand pounds. And that's attributable to the income.
Okay, Dave?
No, I must admit, I'm pretty shocked. Well, first of all, congratulations that we, um, are underspent. But unfortunately, our, uh, our income has been hugely impacted. Uh, and I just can't really understand how we've got in this situation really. Um, and I, is it something, is it something to do with the timing of the payments? We might get them at the beginning of next year or is it just, uh?
I'm not sure. We have, how, how the RPA works is that you have a certain period of time to put your, your claim in.
Yeah.
And then they start punishing you. So if you put it in one month later, you lose ten percent two months later. And I can see, I have access to the portal, so I've seen that our claims have been going in on time, so it's certainly not that. I just have to ask the, the, the company that we use who manages this, what, what their answer is. Uh, I'm not sure whether leaving the, you know, I don't want to use the word leaving the EU because it gets blamed for lots of things. But whether that has an impact or whether the scheme itself has changed and has been phased out or there's, there's greater emphasis, that might be the case. But we certainly do have, I'm, I'm scratching my head as to why this has happened.
I mean, you mentioned rural payments, but there, there's two lines up there, there's the rural payments one, which is, I think we're ex. I'm not sure what we were expecting on there, there was no budget on there. Is that a sub of the, of the one above?
I, I think most of them have just been put into the same, we've only budgeted one item at a bite's speed. Uh, we, we sometimes don't get the documentation coming in before we actually know what the, what the payment's for. So it's just probably an accounting or bookkeeping issue rather than a conceptual issue. We budgeted for one, one amount of thirty-nine thousand from RPA. And as you can see, I think we've received, they gave us an interim payment quite early on, uh, which was exciting news. But I just, I can't answer the question as to why it's down by twenty-six thousand pounds.
And does that impact our budget for next year as well then?
It may.
Because, uh, if the same thing happens next year, I mean, we can't really rely on that line of the budget really, isn't it?
Well, that's why I'm going to try and get a detailed explanation from our agents.
I'm still shocked because of significant loss. Not sure how we're going to recover from it, personally.
I mean, we've had the RPA payments for as long as I can remember as a councillor, so, you know, it's been fairly consistent. But I know there was talk about them being dissolved, um, but, you know, it'd be better, it would be good to understand because it's absolutely crucial, isn't it? Since for the income point of view.
I mean, and these payments are linked to our conservation work on the common and, uh, on, on the heritage, or on the, uh.
Castle Park, um. Ford Meadow and Barnham Cross Common.
Yeah.
I know one of the reasons why we got overpaid was that there's a little bit of land on Two Mile Bottom on the other side of there. And that land was supposed to be transferred to us. So I think when they did the initial claim on the expectation that that land was transferred to us, they actually claimed basic payment scheme on that. And, and it, it wasn't transferred to us. Right at the end, it all of a sudden wasn't transferred, but the claim was therefore adjusted for that. So they have, they have claimed that. It's not very much money, but they have claimed some of that back.
Is that the eight thousand pounds that's mentioned?
Eight thousand, the eight thousand pounds is made up of two components. One is that is, um, but we got a capital grant to do a whole of work on Barnham Cross Common and on, and on Castle Park. Uh, the condition of the grant is that payment actually had to go through our bank account. And one cheque, the payment went through about, about a few weeks after the year end. Um, and so they disqualified that expenditure, so we have to pay it back. It's about six thousand pounds. We have to pay that back to them, uh, I think by next week, otherwise I have to pay interest.
We can't appeal that decision.
Uh, it's, it's outside the grant conditions.
Yeah.
The unfortunate part is it goes back to two thousand and seventeen. So it's, uh, two councils ago. I can't explain, unfortunately, they look at the actual back statement, they look at the cheque and they look at the, where it went through the back statement. And you can't, you know, you can't change the data where through a back statement.
Complete pandemic, as you know.
I mean, that's quite a lot of money because that eight and a half K, I mean, that's coming out of our budget this year.
Yeah.
Um, although it relates to something from two thousand and seventeen. I mean, it's out of our control, but I mean, it's got to be paid, I suppose. But presumably, we, we paid for the fence, this is fence at Castle Park, wasn't it? We paid for the work to be done.
Yes.
And essentially, we're just having to suck up the cost rather than the rural payments agency paying for it, which we thought would be the case.
True.
Okay.
We, we, we had mentioned, is this the high level stewardship thing? Is it linked to that to that? I hear these terms and I'm not quite sure where they fall. Okay, yeah.
So it's a mixture, isn't it, of eight and a half K paid back for historical issues plus a dropping income. So it's a bit of a double whammy relating to RPA stuff. Just as well, we have underspent on other things then.
But. It's, it's not having an impact on the, 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 uh, financial budget. But we did agree to keep a, a tally of how much we have to pay out for vandalism. Is there a figure available for that? And do we actually, uh, consider the man hour payment as well, as, as well as, you know, buy materials? Be nice to know at the end of the year how much this vandalism has cost us.
I think that was an action that sort of Nick agreed to take away and I know he was starting to build up a list, but I haven't seen it. Uh, so we'll make a note of that. I think that'd be useful.
I think particularly, sorry to interrupt Nick.
Yes.
Uh, I mean, the playparks is another area of what we've seen in the, in the town centre. I mean, I had a meeting with our playpark contractors the other day and they said they put something in and they've come back the next day and it's gone. You know, it's all, it's been broken. So they've actually suggested to us that we, you know, we don't have gates and fences around our playpark areas. And I'm not too sure that I'm brave enough to make, make that recommendation. Because I think our playpark areas are a, you know, are a, uh.
Don't necessarily require, I think they're taking the fences down at Wheaton, but from, you know, from a parent, grandcha, uh, grandparent prospect. The fact that you know that there's a fence, I mean, slight risk for grandson. But the fact is, it keeps the dogs out and when you want children playing, you really don't want an area where dogs have been moved.
We suggested they use that as current tender.
Okay, any other questions on finance, folks? No, happy to note the financial report. Yeah. Thank you very much. Okay, uh, seven, seven, one, approval of small grant applications. Uh, we've got three, uh, all of which, um, were circulated in advance and gone through the usual checks. Um, we'll vote for them on block, but do you want to introduce each one, Alan, just to explain who they are and what we do?
Uh, the first one is the Norwich Road Residence Association. Uh, they, they do a lot of litter picking and as you'll see on the, on the screen behind me, uh, basically they're just looking to, uh, refresh some of their, um, equipment. Um, to make, to, to ensure that they can continue, uh, doing their litter picking work. Um, that's really what the, what the basis of this, um, grant is. I've got a compliance perspective, so I have to say they, it's such a pleasure to assist. Because they fully complied with all the requirements and ticked all the boxes and that, that was relatively easy to do this. Uh, again, the principle of what they want to do and how they want to use the grant is, is for this committee to consider. The second, uh, application was from the Albertum School, uh, Academy. Um, and this, this was a little bit interesting, virtual, they really battled to provide the information and we, we get stuck when we sit in the office. Do we actually just send it back and say, provide it? But what we tried to be is a little bit proactive, so we went onto the offset website, we went onto the, their own website. And then they had significant documentation there, so we've actually gone and taken the documentation that required to ensure that they've actually complied with the grant. This is quite interesting, this is a special needs school and what they're trying to do is pay for people to come and actually, who, who have the same experiences or learning needs as the, as, as the children. That the children can actually see people in the role, uh, role playing model. And that was my, um, uh, understanding of what the grant was, was going to be useful.
So I, I, I was particularly pleased with this application because it, uh, although it's not insect bed, uh, a lot of their pupils do come from that. And, uh, and it, and it's a, a great example of, uh, um, cooperation between the school and, and members outside of the school community and for the wider community. So I thought it was a really good example of creative work there. And it's sort of, and it, and it's not part of the, the school life as such, not curriculum as such, but it's, um, I thought, an add-on really. Gives the kids a really good experience, I think.
Thank you, Dave, Mike.
Um, I, I can't honestly bring myself to agree with the last comment. Um, so it's not part of school curriculum. Well, children who have autism need support. It is, it is part of the school's work or activity. I find it strange that we would, I take your points about some children coming from sectors, but the fact is, it's not in sector, it's in Albertum. It's run by a private body, it's not even in our county. And I think that if we were to agree this, we'd be very hard pressed not to agree with a whole range of other things. Including funding organisations like schools, which are state funded, not sector town council funded. And they have funds to deal with the special needs of children and general school, the special needs schools even better funded. But they do have funds to deal with children with autism, which I entirely agree is an issue that needs tackling in our community. So I, I feel that we'd be endangering ourselves in effect by giving money to this. Because, because we, every other school will say, especially ones in sector will say, for heaven's sake, they're giving money to a school not in sector. They must give some money to us, so you can expect seven more, uh, bids next time around. But also. I'm not convinced that we should be supporting schools. I mean, how, it's been my entire working life, I love schools, I think are hugely important. But whether it's up to sector town council, who is struggling to get money to do other things that we are responsible for. To be giving money to something for which we're not responsible. So I'm sorry, I wouldn't be wanting to support this particular proposal.
In, in that case, I will take them individually rather than on block to, uh, give you and anybody else the opportunity to vote against. But, um, are there any other questions on this specific one before we move on to the third one?
I'm just going to come back a little bit on that because I think we have at least, uh, given a grant, um, to at least one other body that operates outside of the town. But with people from the town, that was the, um, uh, the support for prisoners. And so there were sector people, but they weren't actually located in sector and the, and the charity that we gave the money to wasn't purely for sector. And I think also the, um, I mean, I looked at it fairly carefully and I also looked at our, um, um. Uh, our guidelines or rules and it seemed to me to comply with. guidelines or rules. And it seemed to me to comply with the guidelines, because it wasn't, it's actually a, it's for an event that doesn't happen within the school, well, in the school, but it's not, it's not just for the school children, it's for other people as well in the community. And, and the, and the other thing is that although we are looking for funds to do all sorts of different things, we have actually allocated money to give grants to the community. And we haven't actually managed to suspend it all this year. I've got many there that's uncredited.
Can I just stress that, that there is a difference between voluntary activities on the one hand, and state funded activities on the other. And I feel that that cannot be understated. It's just really important that we recognise what the limits of our funds are and put it, and put them into things that would not otherwise have the opportunity to exist. The previous one is that people from Setford, in Setford, were volunteering to help Setford. And it would be cruel indeed if you said, and you can pay to provide your own kit as well. But that seems to me an ideal situation, not an award, but I think an ideal situation to help people. This is, I would suggest to colleagues, a very, very different situation.
Okay, Chris, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm not going to, I find it difficult to fight that we're subsidising academies. It's private, in my mind, I'm really against academies. I don't, you know, the fact that the expense and support the children, great. The fact that the place is a private education funded, educational thing that takes money out of the system instead of putting back in my money, but I'm stuck between a rock and a hard place. I really want to support the idea of the children. So I'm not a big, I'm not an academyist.
Okay. John? Anyone else wish to comment on this one before we move on to the third one? Susie?
I'm just, I think, I mean, it doesn't leave, I don't think it does leave us open, because it's for one specific thing, isn't it? For a speaker to come in on one occasion, it's not like we're going to be funding it for the next ten years or something. And they may get a lot of funding, but the, you know, special needs education is really poorly funded, isn't it? So my feelings are, I think, you know, it's just a once off grant that, and, and people from Setford are going to be using that. So I think it's a good idea.
Just want to come back.
We make that apparent, it's a one off.
Well, all our grants are one off.
I know, but I mean, they could come back next year.
In theory, yes. And each application is assessed on its merits, and we do the assessment, but we don't, as councillors, have to agree that even though they've passed the assessment, we can still, you know, vote against. That's, you know, we'll, we'll all have different views on some of these, to be honest with you. So I entirely appreciate Mike's view. And some of you may agree and wish to vote against, but that's, you know, that's perfectly legitimate with our process to do that. Dennis?
Two things really. One, we're totally about academies, I'm totally used. The other one is, I thought there was one of our rulings was that it had to be within the bounds of Setford. I may be wrong about that.
I think the wording says something, like, or can demonstrate that Fettford residents will benefit. And in the notes, the assessment here, seventy of their ninety children, seventy of them are from Fettford. I was quite surprised about that. I thought it would be, you know, ten, twenty maybe, but seventy of ninety, you know.
I know, just saying.
It's, you know, seventy-one percent, I'm amazed, really.
Well, as I'm putting them wrong.
A good question, well asked.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll move on to the third one, the Scouts.
Third one is from the Fettford Scout Group. And again, I really battled to get information out. Luckily, I knew a councillor that was, used to be a trustee, and I managed to go to them because I was putting my hair out to try and get the basic information. And it's, it's really difficult to go back to organisations, and then you have to meet with them face to face and explain what you need. So again, I got given access to, to, to websites, et cetera, and I was able to get the information that required. The third, Fettford Scout Group, what they're looking for is just some technology to help them make their engagements with the Scouts a little bit more interesting, rather than having to print off educational papers and get the Scouts to read them. Again, once you, once I've managed to find all the information, using, including using the charity's commission's website, they have complied with the conditions of the grant.
Any questions on the last one? Okay, so we'll take them in order. The first one was Norwich Road Residents' Association. Can I have a proposer and secondor in support? Dennis and Chris, thank you very much. Can I have a show of hands of those that support that application? Thank you, those that wish to abstain. So that one is approved. Thank you very much. And for the minutes Karen, Dave and Barbara abstained, because they are active with the group there. The second one, Elverdon Church of England Primary Academy. Can I have a proposer in support? David and a secondor, Susie. Show of hands in those in favour of that application.
Lucky, great.
Thank you. Those against? And, and those abstaining? Chris, so that one is approved. Moving on to the last one, third Fettford Scout Group. Can I have a proposer and secondor in support?
Proposer?
Yeah. David and Susie, Chris, you pick. All those in agreement with that one, please? That one is also approved.
We can just add one last one, I didn't dispute the information forward. At the last meeting, we, we did the Standing Force Bowls Cup. And we just put in place a conditionality that they couldn't use it for operating expenditure. They had a meeting quite recently, and they've asked that it'll actually be used as a one tool kind of programme to strengthen the, the banks on their bowling greens. They estimate the cost to be about four hundred pounds, and we, our grant would be three hundred pounds. So if I could just ask the committee to consider that application as well. They'd also wanted to use it for rent and other operating maintenance and other operating expenses, and that is clearly outside the scope of our, of our grant. Okay.
And do you want that proposed and secondor for that, or just a note?
I think if you could, if you could propose the secondor, it'd be great.
So essentially, we're being asked to fund an upgrade to.
The actual bowling green.
The actual bowling green. Okay, cool. Now, a proposer and secondor in support of that, Dennis and Chris, all those in agreement? Very good. That was approved. And do all of those applications, is that the previous financial year's budget, even though we're in April? Will this come from the new year?
We just think this meeting is recorded, so. I have provided for the money in, in this year project.
Okay, good. Thank you very much, everybody, for that. I think that was useful. Moving on to seven, seven, two. Application for change of date of an open space event.
Basically, this is a very simple request. We approved Larry Gray's fund fees to use the mouth of common from the twenty-seventh of March to the second of April. He's come in, written to us and asked, could he change the date from the twenty-second to the thirtieth of May? And I've just brought it to the committee. It doesn't catch with any other events on plan on mouth of common, just if you would approve that request.
Everyone happy?
Yeah, he does a lot with that, so yeah.
Yep. Good. Seven, seven, three, Riverside Sculpture Trail. To consider the development of Riverside Sculpture Trail for Fettford. And we've got various decisions there. Agree locations for two more sites for tree sculptures and lecterns on the Priory Walk and accessible river trail, walk, walk trail, Sea Heritage map. Consider King's House as an additional site within action to work with the Standing Force Trust to develop ideas for a sculpture and discuss match funding, to confirm proposed actions to commence the Sculpture Trail project. And it says here, lead town team manager, but obviously he's not here. And there was quite a bit of information in the pack, so hopefully you all had a chance to read that. And somebody's obviously been out and taken some photos, which is very useful. We'll see those locations. Anything, Alan, you wanted to add?
Because what we're worried about is actually using the cheaper funding, because time is, is our enemy. So it's really to make a, to make a decision as to where we want those lecterns, and which trees to use. And if we commence that, we'll secure that, that cheaper funding.
Any questions or comments, folks?
I'm pleased to see that it's coming up, because I remember when I first came on the council, I was walking around the town looking at this. And so it would be pretty nice to have it in place. And so, yeah, I, I urge that we get on with it. Spend the money before they have it back.
So there's no RPA money linked to this, isn't there? And, and all of the money listed on the budget there, Fettford Society, Fettford Town Council project budget, that's, you know, in our budget line for projects. And then the contribution is confirmed. So there's twenty-one K sat there to deliver this. We literally just need to approve going forward to the next stage. Presumably, there'll be a sort of more formal request to Standing Force to use the tree at the front. Yep. Everyone happy to agree?
Yes, agreed.
Agreed.
And again, I think this will be on the job list for the committee to oversee this project over the next year. It's, you know, it's a fairly decent sized project, it all needs some input.
We might just search and box. We will, we will go ahead and target quotes for the various occasions and bring it back to the next meeting. Look at the purchase of lanterns, put some options on the table. It'll just be the positioning of them for
Yeah.
For this, for the next committee to consider.
Yeah. Essentially, what we're agreeing is for you guys to gather some more information, particularly around costs, because I, you know, no idea how much, these things are quite expensive sometimes. But, you know, principles, we're happy to proceed and look forward to reviewing the costs at a later date. If we're here.
Certainly, we've been two more sites. The members of the committee to consider that.
Yeah, let's have a look. I'm just looking at the list of sites. Is there a preference from, because when we walked around, and I remember Dave, myself and a couple of others walked around, you know, the idea was that we wanted to spread them out as much as we can to make a decent walk. And presumably, not all of these trees are in a, you know, healthy enough condition to be, to use. But are they all available, the ones that are on here?
My understanding is that is the case.
If they're healthy, we shouldn't be using them.
Well, you know what I mean.
Suitable, right?
Yeah, suitable for the.
Some of them are more dead than others. That's kind of what, you know.
I know how they feel.
You put a chainsaw on some of them and they'll fall apart. That's kind of what I'm worried about. I mean, there are some on here that have quite a lot of ivy growth on them, and I would be reluctant to take that off, frankly, because, you know, that is important habitat, whereas some of them are, you know, literally just stumps. I think we should prioritise using them. And, I mean, this one here, number four, it's got, you know, sort of bushes growing up it, and the one below. I think if we could have avoided those as a sort of, sort of moving forward, I think that'd be good. Because if you're going to sculpt it, you're going to have to take everything off it in the first place.
Ivy's horrible, it should be destroyed.
Not if you're a bird and want to hide in it. Does that give you enough to go on, I think? So, yeah.
We'll proceed then.
Yeah.
We actually really could have expected you.
Good. Moving on, seven, seven, four, community engagement. To discuss and agree any consultation or media release required. Anybody got any suggestions?
Do we know when the, the fish party is going to be finished?
It's about two months.
Oh, okay.
So.
Too early to say anything about that, I think.
That's been getting. We let back to the new committee.
Yeah. Nothing? None at the moment. We're a bit limited on what we can promote anywhere at the moment, so that's fine. Seven, seven, five, committee officers update. Receive any update from the committee officer, since it's a bit off the agenda. And then Graham, anything you wanted to add? Oh, when is he leaving?
He actually leaves at the end of this month.
Okay. So not only is this the last meeting of this four year council term, I'm assuming you don't all want to come in on the Wednesday before polling day. Because that would be the third of May, but my view is that we should postpone that meeting or cancel it rather. So firstly, thank you all for your contributions and support over the past year. As an amenities committee, we've got a tremendous amount of work done, which, you know, made some really good achievements. And the other thing is, it's a shame Nick's not here, because it would actually be Nick's last amenities meeting as employee of the town council. And I'm sure I speak for all of us when I say that Nick has been a tremendous asset to the amenities committee. I'm very sad from a council point of view that he's leaving, selfishly, because he's brilliant. He gets, you know, everything I ask of him, you know, he does really well. But for Nick personally, I'm sure it's a great opportunity. So on behalf of us all, we'd like to sort of wish Nick all the best for the future and him for what he's done for us.
Mood.
Everybody happy with?
Yeah.
Lovely. And on that note, meeting closed. Thank you all very much.